Enough is enough. It is time to invest in our students. It is time to invest in restorative justice for our students. It is time to invest in councilors for our students. It is time to invest in social services for our students. It is time to invest to keep our schools open for our students. We are standing united to say no to the police in our schools and no to the harms of privatization. The time is now to stop harming our students. We need to invest in our students. Stand with BOP. Stand with BOP together. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Kaden with Critical Resistance. I'm the Oakland organizer. We are in full solidarity with BOP on the abolition of policing in schools. Policing in schools harms youth, ultimately preparing and placing them into the prison system. When police are placed into schools, crime actually goes up because issues or conflicts that previously would have been handled by counselors are now going into the criminal justice system. Schools should be supportive environments for young people to thrive and get the support they need. Places where teachers are given all the financial support they need to provide the best learning experience, where we don't have issues getting books or school supplies for students. Schools should be places where students, teachers, parents, and our communities come together to create vibrant, loving, compassionate spaces of growth and evolution. What I hope for the students of OUSD is that Oakland School Police Department will be removed from their campuses in 2020. What I hope for the students of OUSD is that they will all be given a chance to become their best selves at school, rather than being seen as troublemakers, criminal, or problem children. All children are treasures. They only one or two will ultimately be tasked with leading our communities in the future and caring for us as we age and become elders. It is our job to protect them and prepare them for that future, not to prepare them for placement in prison.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kamau Lopez, and I am an Oakland native. I grew up in East Oakland, where I went to Emors Cox, Elmhurst, and Castle Mine. I have four sons who I love dearly. We walk around Oakland and see police all the time. I do not agree with having police in the schools. One of the issues that I've seen with my own children is that when they go to school and they see the police, it makes them nervous. One of my sons is disabled, so that means that when he goes to school and he sees police, no matter what it looks like on the outside, on the inside, he gets anxiety. He gets terrified because of seeing the police with guns on campuses. I do not agree with that. I believe that all children, because I have multicultural children in my house, I feel that all children, no matter black, brown, whatever they are, should be able to go to school and feel safe without police who went up and down the campuses, looking around to see who they can perpetrate, who they can go around and bother. I support BOP. I've been standing with them for the past three years, and for 2020, I am hoping and praying that with you all's support, that we get the police out of the schools.
So honored to be here with the Black Organizing Project because what they've been fighting for for the last 10 years is the reason why I'm on crutches right now. As most of you know, I am one of many parents from now of over 20 schools that have been fighting the school closures that are happening here in Oakland, affecting 35,000 children because there are these outside billionaires from outside of Oakland who are driving an agenda to shut down our public schools and replace them with unaccountable charters that are not union and have no accountability to the people, even though they're taking public funds and shutting down our public schools. So we have been part of this fight. They tried to shut down our kid's school. We're not going to let it happen, but we're not going to let it happen, not just to our kid's school, but it's got to stop for all of the schools. No more school closures. Every time a school shuts down, it is like a death to the community, and it's got to stop. It's going to stop because we're going to make it stop. No more school closures, no more new charters. Stop the school-to-prison pipeline. They're about to spend $75 million on a probation camp that currently houses 15 kids while they shut down 24 schools with 35,000 children. So stop the school-to-prison pipeline. Move the money from the prisons to the schools. And then let us oversee the money, because y'all can't do it. You don't know how to run the school district. Mismanagement of this district, shutting down schools, and their privatizing agenda, and we're just not going to let it happen. Because we all know one thing they don't know is that we're going to win. We're going to win. We're going to stop the school closures. We're going to get rid of the school police. If they can spend $7 million on police, they can take away that money and give it to us to keep our schools open.
Well, first, hello, everyone that is here tonight. I am affectionate to the community as Uncle Bobby. I am the uncle of Oscar Grant. And let me say it now on record that I am definitely in support of BOP and what they're doing in eliminating the police from schools. So, as you know, I'm a family member that has been impacted by police violence. There is no horror comparable to police when they use excessive force on your loved one. That horror, I'm telling you, is so impactful that it traumatizes you for years. So me as an adult, when I witnessed a video of what happened to my nephew, Oscar Grant, I remain traumatized for years, even up to today, when I go back in time to reopen that wound. So it's extremely important that we be supportive to BOP in eliminating police from these schools, because we can imagine these children seeing on a regular and consistent basis the violence of the police in the community, the violence of the police across the United States, the violence of police in their schools, and how traumatizing it could be to them. And if we want to make sure that we have a real just society where our children don't have to suffer this trauma or this fear of the police, we must work with BOP in order to eliminate this sickness and this heinous act of police in our schools.
Our students deserve to have schools that have counselors in them, trauma-induced services in them. Our children deserve to have schools that don't traumatize them. They deserve to get an adequate education and have the adequate materials in order to do that. Our children deserve to be in classrooms where there's not 30 students in the classroom so that they can actually learn. Our students deserve to have support services that are due to them. And what we need to continue to stand in solidarity and tell OUSD, take that $6.5 million that you're investing in the over-criminalization, surveillance, and policing of our children and put that back into schools. The police are wrong. They are the biggest gang in this country. We have been warning OUSD about the police and the habits of policing. We have been warning OUSD. We have been telling them for years, testimony after testimony. We know more about the school police department than the school board. We have been sitting there pulling data. We did that, tracking costs of service for absolutely nothing. Policing is not about just controlling a certain, it's about social control. This school-to-prison pipeline having police inside a school is rooted in anti-black, and we need to call it for what it is.
No justice, no peace, no racist police.
Now, thank you to BOP for what they're doing here. Now, for me, I might even step up here. Now, for me, I'm a proud graduate of Oakland Public Schools. I've been at almost every school board meeting here since 2012, when the school board came and closed my schools, Maxwell Park and Santa Fe. And one of the things is, ever since then, I've been sitting side by side and shoulder to shoulder with BOP. So this is our moment now to finally get rid of the OUSD PD. This is our moment to realize what we saw at the October 23rd school board meeting is what our students and families are subjected to every day across Oakland. I remember growing up in Oakland, there was no OUSD PD then. This is not something they have to have, and it's not something we want. But unfortunately, it's just indicative of one of the many, many, many failures of this school board. From manipulating our budget so they're cutting money from our schools while they have a surplus, to forcing our teachers on strike, to closing our schools, to planning to sell our public property, to having their police attack us at a public school board meeting, to now denying us complete access from our public meetings. We have one year to find candidates and elect candidates who will actually represent us, but we have to start now. We need to tell our neighbors, our friends, our family of the importance of next year's election. We need to make sure our folks are registered, and more than anything else, we have to engage. It is up to us to demand that in this year, they do not close our schools. It is up to us to demand in this year that they do not sell our public property. It is up to us to demand an audit and bring some sense to these budget numbers, and it is up to us to abolish the OUSD PD.
Actions taken by the district in recent years have undercut our commitment to equity. To be clear, I'm talking about school closures that disproportionately harm black and brown students. We have asked for and not seen any evidence that closing a child's school will improve their learning outcomes or save money that could be reinvested in community schools. How many schools have we closed since 2004? Are we in any better fiscal shape today than we were then? Last year, OUSD overspent its original budget on administrators by $1.5 million. Even if we trusted your cost savings estimate on the closure of Roots, those minimal savings would be swallowed whole by the free-willing spending culture in OUSD. So, the 3,000 educators of the Oakland Education Association call for an end to the so-called blueprint process that prioritizes facilities over families. We call for defunding the OUSD police force and ending our in-house criminalization of our youth. Any entity bold enough to choke and club parents at a school board meeting has no business around our students. Jay Baldwin once said, "I can't believe what you say because I see what you do." He could be talking about how OUSD treats teachers in this district. Students, parents, communities stood with teachers for seven days on strike to secure class-size reductions, more student support, and a living wage. That was in March, and now we are here, and the district is not respecting the agreement you made to hire more psychologists. You aren't respecting the agreement you made with us to hire more speech therapists. You aren't respecting the agreement you made with us to hire more newcomer staff. Not to mention, you aren't respecting the agreement you made with us regarding our health care. Again, I can't believe what you say because I see what you do.
Some of you I have voted for, and so I really think that it's only fair for you to allow me to speak. We're asking you to consider it, because right now what you're doing is you are not considering what the people want, the very people that have put you in the position to which you are in. We are coming from different areas in Oakland. As a part of Black Organizing Project, as a parent and as a resident of this city, I'm asking you to remove the police from the Oakland Unified School District as soon as 2020.
Okay, we are now moving on, ma'am. We're now going to move on to public comment on agenda items.
We have given you our plan, and we want to make sure that you have not only read it, that you have also talked with your peers about it. Some of you have not even responded, and the people have been asking you for weeks and for months to do something about this, and nothing has happened. As a parent, I am appalled. As a former teacher, I am appalled. As a person that has lived in Oakland all my life, I am appalled. We need to get some people up here that are actually going to stand and do what we have asked them to do. I do not want to bury my children on the backs of Oakland Unified School District. They see enough police. We're asking for you. Make a commitment, make a stand. My youngest son is seven years old. I do not want to bury my son because my son gets killed by an Oakland Unified School District police officer, and this is real. This is not a game. We're asking for you. Just make it plain. Just do what we're asking for you to do. There is no reason why you cannot. We've given you, we've taken out all of the myths that you've given, we've taken out all of the questions that you've given. It's not a matter of money, it's a matter of perspective. And if you look at it as the people are looking at it, then you will see that this is not a game. This is something that is serious, that is costing lives, and has already cost people lives. Please, pay attention to the BOP plan, pay attention to what the people are asking you. Please get the police out of our schools. Thank you.
Black students and black families migrating to Oakland from the South were framed in the racist rhetoric of black delinquency and black dysfunction, which led to school and police collaboration. In the 1960s, policing in schools has zero tolerance policies. In the three decades since then, policing, punishment, and criminalization have invaded every facet of the black life, driving the black community out of Oakland. OUSD is openly participating and continuing this racist legacy.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Akila Shaheed.
And you, I don't recall your name for item O, which is public comment on agenda item eight.
Get to divest from school policing by eliminating the Oakland School Police Department by 2020 and barring any future contracts with law enforcement. Why is this important? Because Oakland Unified School District data on disproportionate enforcement and school policing.
We are going to go back into resets. This is not the agenda item on which you are taking comment right now.
School policing contradicts Oakland Unified School District values of equity, sanctuary, and putting students first. It directly undermines Oakland Unified School District's commitment to restorative justice and trauma-informed practices. School policing of A.C.'s school districts in Alameda County, Oakland Unified School District is the only district to have its own internal police department, costing over $2.3 million annually, not including an additional $4 million spent on security personnel that contributes to the overall criminalizing and punitive school discipline findings.
Hi, I'm Malcolm Ross, and I'll speak in part three. Many students who are currently being criminalized at school have mental health needs, behavioral health needs, or disabilities. Policing and criminalization disproportionately impacts them and often causes deeper harm or trauma. These students in their school need stronger support. Currently, OUSD's staffing levels for school-based mental health fall far short of national recommendations for students-to-staff ratios. In the study year of 2018-2019, the ratio of students per school psychologist was 965 to 1. For school social workers, the ratio was 1,619 to 1, and for counselors, it was 984 to 1.
We're going into 10 years where you have seen the community. We have come up here, we have talked to you about our traumatic experiences with police. We have dug deep into the data. We ended up knowing more about, we do know more about the school police department than you are. We have come up here year after year after year, meeting after meeting after meeting, saying to you guys, "We warned you about what happened at the school board meeting on the 23rd. We knew that the police was wrong." You think that by protecting yourselves from regular community is something? Look at what they did to the people here, but think about how worse black and brown students got it in those classrooms, in those schools. Yeah, this is, this is a fight. This is a fight, but you know what? It's about morality, it's about humanity. We're asking people, it's time for each one of you to make a stand. We all know what y'all stand.
Which side are you on?
But it's time for you all to make a stand. You got a choice. You can either stand with BOP, make a political stance that this school district is going to end the school-to-prison pipeline, because we know police and the school-to-prison pipeline ideology is rooted in anti-black racism. And we're here to say, we ain't going nowhere. So y'all can either stand with us or get ready to get out of your seats.
We have observed on multiple occasions that OUSD is using the optics of our success in order to promote a narrative that we are writing to make clear that we vehemently reject that Elmhurst United be used as an exemplar to justify these plans, which will decimate community schools across the city of Oakland. The success of our school is due exclusively to the hard work and emotional labor of our educators, our parents, and our site leadership, as well as the process of our particular school site. We are speaking to you today to testify to the trauma, the misinformation, the lack of support, and challenges our school community has faced over the past two years, as evidence that the blueprint plan to close and merge schools in Cohorts 2 and 3 should not proceed at this time.
The families and students impacted and destabilized by the blueprint process are disproportionately students of color from the flatlands of Oakland. Our school community was forced not only to accept the closure and merger of Elmhurst Community Prep and Alliance Academy into one school, but also to welcome displaced students of the now-closed Roots International Academy. Children are at the center of our work, and we welcome all of these brilliant young people east Oakland with open arms. However, it's important to recognize that school closures have long-lasting and devastating impacts on children and adults alike.
There was no meaningful community engagement around the process, nor was there any evidence presented that money would be saved as a result. On May 21st, 2018, staff was told about the decisions to merge our schools as part of Cohort 1 of the blueprint process. This wasn't this decision made by district officials with little knowledge of our schools' histories, cultures, and needs. Soon after, the district called for one cursory meeting for the community, giving only two days' notice to our working families, and it was poorly attended. From the superintendent's own statements at these meetings, it was clear to us that all of the school board members had made up their minds before the vote was called in June.
The case that we need to close schools is to resolve the district's financial situation is flimsy at best. The district claims to be in financial crisis and forces the students and teachers of Oakland to upend their lives and make massive sacrifices to resolve this problem. Yet was any money saved by merging and closing our schools?
No.
This question has never been answered. It was not a surprise to us when the February 2019 fact-finding report revealed that potential savings from attempted school closures are offset by implementation costs and a loss of enrollment primarily in charter schools. As we traded a new school, there were added costs of hiring movers, which our leadership had to push for on our behalf, rekeying the buildings, repainting, rebranding, and designing new uniforms, which OUSD did not plan for. Our site had to cover the cost of purchasing uniforms for our new school out of our own site budget, which was between $10,000 and $20,000. The arts integration work carried out by Alliance teachers was not incorporated into the new school, which translated to tens of thousands of dollars of grant money invested in professional development squander. Where are the savings?
The blueprint process pits our communities against each other while paving the way for charters and privatization. At Elmhurst United, we are doing our best to heal from the disappointment and sense of loss that we have inherited from these disastrous policies of yours. And we are making the most of the merger because it is our duty, and it is the school district's duty, to serve young people as best we can. And if I can personally add something, as a former member of Sancopa Academy, I feel very torn to be up here protesting school closures because you have allowed them to wither away to the point where they must be merged to survive, and you have pitted them against the community that they will merge with, and you have no viable answers for how you will heal that gap. And I'm very, very upset that you're planning on doing it to other communities.
If the merger at Elmhurst United's indeed a success, that is no thanks to the district. Contrary to what was promised by district officials, support from the district was weak and inconsistent at best. Superintendent Johnson Tremel wrote, "I take hope in witnessing firsthand the positive changes that are happening as a result of the blueprint process. Elmhurst United Middle School is brimming with students and offering more robust elective courses." This statement erases all of the extra labor staff at all levels took to make this process happen since the district was largely absent. Despite requests for support, Superintendent Johnson Tremel and Director James Harris never came to support or check in on the process. Staff on the vision team met every Thursday for two hours to design the new school, yet we only saw district staff approximately five times the entire year. This lack of district support was coupled with the impossible timeline of trying to close two schools with dignity and open another one twice as large with some semblance of functionality. It was difficult to coordinate across sites because we had different schedules, and the team had to work over the summer and during preps in order to complete this work. The principal of Alliance left abruptly at the start of the planning year, which caused additional strain on that school, and in the end, we created a workable plan, but it was not because of you.
We believe that OUSD does not have the trust record to proceed with the closures and mergers at Frick, at SOL, Kaiser, Sancopa, and yet the undisclosed schools of Cohort 3. We were promised financial and structural supports that were never delivered. Those that were delivered were so meager and so late that they are downright disrespectful and violent. While dealing with these intense emotions of mourning that come with losing a school and the stress of crafting the process without a literal blueprint, we had to fight to keep our enrollment up, to reassure our families, and proactively recruit students from surrounding elementary schools. The blueprint process pits our communities against each other while paving the way for charter schools and privatization. At Elmhurst United, we are doing the best to heal from the disappointment and the sense of loss that we have inherited from these policies, and we are making the most of the merger because it is our duty, as it is a school district, to serve young people as best that you can. Thank you.
So this was very, very relevant to O, and instead of actually letting people comment, you just cut them off. So I signed up for O. Can we get this back underway like we're supposed to? Good, I know the rules for you. I'll help you out. You didn't do item O.
Come on now. Mr. Hutton, you are welcome to give public comment on the general consent report. That's where we are on the agenda. Please proceed.
So we just skipped over item O, because I signed up to speak on that, and my name was called and I lined up, and now when I'm here at the front... I wasn't blocked, I was standing in line, I wasn't blocked. Because at the last meeting, I was denied access into the building, into the meeting, and we have it on video documented.
Do you have comments on the general consent report?
I am commenting on it. You have eliminated public access and public comment from your meetings, which is illegal to preemptively do that. And this is after you had the OUSPD attack the community right here. I've been to every school board meeting in eight years. I've been coming to school board meetings since before I was born. We've never seen that before. And not one of you came down and checked on us that night. Put my life under threat when you call OPD and a helicopter and 10 cars for backup. Not one apology, nobody has accepted responsibility. The investigation still hasn't started. You still haven't released the body cam, and your response was to double down and eliminate any public access. This is Oakland, California, and thankfully, y'all might not be aware, but the city is reawakening again. The city is not going to put up with the people we elect using their police force against us anymore. And whether it's you violently attacking us by closing our schools, by cutting our budgets, or by having OUSD PD officers with their clubs assault people, we will not accept this anymore, and there's no more business as usual in Oakland.
Thank you for growing our movement, and most of all, thank you for exposing yourselves as the illegitimate and brutal board that you are. And given your illegitimacy, I call everybody to turn your backs on this board and actually look at the actual official school board meeting happening here, the People's School Board, because you know what? We're not gonna have any more school closures. No more school closures!
No more school closures. Oakland is not for sale. No school closures. Oakland is not for sale. No justice, no peace, no racist police.
We are so glad to see parents, citizens out. We've been fighting this fight for about 10 years. Conspiracy, collusion, corruption. This board has been bought and paid for to promote privatization. The warriors talk about strength in numbers. I would not wait until November. We have enough people right now to start a recall on every board member sitting up here now. So if there's anything I can encourage us to do is to get organized. You're not gonna get anywhere with this. You've seen what they do. Let's start now with recalling all seven.